Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see a nearly full house here. So I'm glad to see a lot of our local residents are interested in one or two or more topics during our study session today. So for the record, today is May 28, 2024. It's 1:00 P.M. This is a City of Prescott study session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Potem Cantelme.
Here.
Councilwoman Freeworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I'm here.
Councilman Montoya.
I am also here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Thank you, everyone, all are present. I am going to just review our standards for public participation during City of Prescott council meetings, and then we will get into our first item. As a reminder, the City of Prescott invites and appreciates public participation in council and board commission and committee meetings. In the spirit of objective analysis and civil debate, we will follow a process format to accomplish sharing of information in a productive and informative manner. Meetings and discussions will follow the following format for agenda items. Staff report and presentation, council questions and discussion, applicant or outside organization presentation and discussion, further council questions, public comment, and a council vote if and when necessary. This is a study session, so there will be no vote today. With decorum and respect in mind, city staff and the council kindly request that the public wait for their opportunity to speak until the public comment portion of discussions. We ask that you debate the proposal or the presented item and not criticize staff or presenters or guests. Any public outbursts will hear the gavel from the mayor or the board commission committee chair requesting decorum. If individuals continue to disrupt the meeting, they may be escorted out. Further, members of the public are expected to present new information and ideas when addressing the council, and if a speaker simply repeats previous comments from the mayor or chair, they may limit their comment time. If the speaker displays hostility toward any of the presenters or staff, they will be gavelled and admonished, and if they continue the attack, the mayor or chair may request that they be escorted from chambers. Finally, we request that applause be limited to recognition during presentation and proclamation portions of the meeting. First up today, we have a presentation and discussion regarding the annual update from Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Do I need to hold the microphone on, or is it on all this? Okay, great, great. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. So good to be with you today. It's time for our annual update. I'm Vinny Gallegos, the executive director of the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or SIMPO for short. So just a little bit for any newcomers, especially those in the audience that might not be familiar with SIMPO. Our vision is a safe and efficient movement of people, goods, and services. So I'll show a map in a little bit, but our area is essentially the central Yavapai or the Quad Cities area. So it's about 400 square miles with around 143,000 in population, and our primary purpose in planning is for that safe and efficient movement of people, goods, and services. As a regional organization, this is, it's good work, it's challenging work to be able to bring around the local cities, the towns, the county together around the table, and we've been doing this for the last 20 years. So we do think a major part of SIMPO that we want to acknowledge, not only in our vision, but especially in this mission statement, is four areas, and I want to focus today in providing you an update of the regional work that we're doing, the leadership that we're taking, the planning that we're doing to help you and your goals as a city and the region, and then also to focus on transportation. And again, I want to remind you that when we talk about transportation, it's multimodal. So it's highway, it's regionally significant roadways, it's bicycle pedestrian trails, and public transit. Today, I brought some dynamic staff with me, and they'll be highlighting some of those areas. Again, just briefly about SIMPO. It was the 2000 census that helped SIMPO come into existence. Metropolitan planning organizations exist throughout Arizona and exist throughout the United States. To date, there's around 450 with this last census. We have nine MPOs in the state of Arizona. The governor of Arizona established SIMPO in 2003, and as I said earlier, the area that we cover today is around 400 square miles with a population of around 143,000. I'd like to invite Pedro Rodriguez, our transit manager, up to first talk about the breakthroughs that we've had in public transit. If you would come on up.
Thanks, Vinny. It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor, members of the council. I want to provide you with a little update regarding public transportation or the people, movement of people. Here, we have a lot of public transportation efforts going on in the SIMPO region. Obviously, some of you have known Yavapai Regional Transit System, or the YAV for short. You also know Yavapai Regional Transit coming from Chino Valley into Prescott. And then as of late, we have the Yavapai Apache Nation. They are set to come here in the near future. Still, a specific date is to be determined, but lots of good things happening in terms of public transportation and getting people to where they need to go. I've shown this map here before, so this is of the FSIMPOS Phase Transit Plan that was approved in 2020. So we first started with Prescott Valley as our Phase One. We recently added an additional zone in Prescott, and I'll be covering a little bit about this zone and zones in general. And then potential expansion in Phase Three of those zones, and eventually the connectivity between the two communities. And so the biggest thing right here is to understand what the intercity demand is within each community, and then eventually providing that intercity service. I guess it's stuck a little bit here. And this one, too. Ah, there we go. Excellent, thank you. So kind of honing down on Phase Two. So what this looks like for the City of Prescott is a microtransit or demand response service. So this is very different than your typical or standard fixed route service with a fixed schedule. It's more on-demand. You can pre-book trips. It almost runs kind of like an Uber, if you will. But you can request your trips via the mobile app. We have the YAV Connect mobile app, where you can call in for people who desire to. You can also, I mentioned pre-booking rides. Our fares are $2 or $1 fares, so anywhere within the zone, as long as it's not outside of the zone, we can provide that trip. We run service Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and this size of zone is three and a half square miles. So this is kind of what our fleet looks like. I think you've seen these vehicles around town. They have YAV Connect branding on the side. Two different types of vehicles. One is a six, and the other one is a nine-passenger vehicle, and both are equipped with ramps and bike racks, and specifically to provide service for people with disabilities.
You know, just curious, Pedro, what determines the $1 or the $2 fare?
Sure. So the $2 fare is for general adult, and then the dollar is for veterans, for people with disabilities, people with wheelchairs, kids as well, and children five and under are free. Excellent question. So I want to provide you kind of what this looks like here in the last 11 weeks that we've been providing service. So this kind of just provides you with a handful.
Pedro, Councilmember Rusing had a question.
Oh, sure, sorry about that.
Sorry. I've seen the vans around town, and I was just going to ask, are they hybrids or?
Right now, it's just gas.
They're gas. Are any plans to have hybrids?
Right now, we, as of the moment, no.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Excellent. So a handful of popular destinations here. So these bars simply outline the, basically, the number of rides to a particular destination. In this case, we're looking at the VA, which is pretty amazing, as our number-one destination. And then you can see Safeway and Walmart and the Courthouse Plaza having a nice cluster there in the middle of your other bigger trip generators. Here is another example. This is a system-wide weekly ridership graphic. So I'll kind of push your eyes over to the top right box where it looks, where you can see the year one and year two ridership numbers. So year one, we completed 18,000 rides. Initially, the forecast by our consultant was 9,000 rides, and we actually doubled that number. Year two, so these are up-to-date numbers now, up to now, you're looking at about 25,000 rides, and we are set for year two to accomplish about 42,000, which is pretty amazing. So since inception, up to date, we're looking at 43,000 rides here in the SIMPO region that the YAV Connect has been able to provide. So the graphic here outlines Prescott Valley's year one. Obviously, it takes time to build this ridership. Prescott Valley's year two is in the gold, and then Prescott's year one, we started again 11 weeks ago, so it's a little bit of a growth there. As of just last week, we actually experienced a 25% increase, which is pretty amazing. So we're now headed to that 200 ridership per week range.
Pedro, Councilman Gambogi has a question.
Excellent.
Pedro, what's the scale on the ordinate?
What's the scale on the?
Ordinate.
On the coordinate? On the number?
On the vertical axis.
Oh, yeah, the vertical axis tells you, so from 0 to 900 rides per week. And then your horizontal axis tells you the week number.
So your year one in Prescott Valley of 18,000 is over the whole year?
18,000 is over the whole 52 weeks.
Thank you.
Excellent. So here's kind of a little dashboard for you all. So again, this is looking at 11 weeks of service. We've completed a little over 1,200 rides. The nice thing about the service is you can actually rate it. So that's kind of the nice thing that we've implemented with technology, is you can rate the service. So all of these rides, we're averaging at about 4.9 out of 5, 5 stars. So some of the comments have been great staff, great drivers. We have excellent customer service. The next stat that I want to provide you all was our average estimated time of arrival. So if you request a trip right now, on average, we're able to fulfill that ride in about 11 minutes. So it's an average number. Obviously, depending on the peak times, it will vary, but that's what you're looking at. Our cost per ride, not to confuse with the fare cost, so the cost per ride is the actual operating cost. We're at $19.19 per last quarter. So again, this number always varies depending on ridership and any type of capital improvement, or excuse me, capital purchase that we do for a particular quarter. So just know that that number varies, and obviously, with ridership, the increase of that and our efficiency, it also plays into that. Wheelchair accessible rides, while they're low at 23.
Pedro, sorry to interrupt, but Councilmember Rusing had a question.
Thank you. A lot of data is here. I was just going to ask if you had some information as like a profile of what the average rider looks like, or the majority of riders, you know, as far as age, purpose, are they?
Yeah, excellent question.
Starting in Prescott Valley, or where?
So for Prescott and Prescott Valley, the average age, so you're looking at about 2/3rds are adult age, that's 18 through 60, and then the other, the other 3rd is seniors, students, kids. So that's your other. Good question. So wheelchair accessible rides, so we do provide this type of service, again, at $2 or $1 per ride. This is a wonderful service to improve the quality of life here in Prescott for those that, for those that need it. Our on-time performance is 96.2%. Again, I'm getting very granular on that percentage number because we are able to actually look at that and pull that data from each ride that is being taken. So it's very precise, and it helps us to improve our efficiency and delivery of service. Next piece is a shared ride. So this is, you're looking at, at any given moment where you have one or more, or excuse me, more than one passengers onboard. In comparison, Prescott Valley is looking at about 50%. We're trying to get to that same level, but it takes a little bit of time to make those improvements. And then lastly, there, you're looking at our trip request by mobile app. So this is looking at kind of your other, you know, your demographic and how we can best serve them. Almost 60% are using that mobile app. So this is a little bit on that. Trip purposes, so I kind of put these two graphs, pie graphs, for comparison. So Prescott Valley, again, has been going on for a little over a year and a half. So it's a little more established, so these numbers are a little more solid. You're looking at 37% for Prescott Valley. Shopping is 21%, and following that is kind of an other. The other is like banking, social services, programs, it's going to church, certain things like that. And then looking at Prescott Valley, again, this is 11 weeks, so you're looking at, I believe that the ridership is trying to see how they can use a service into their daily life, so you will see some changes with, again, 11 weeks' worth of data. But this is, this is kind of a good segue probably to bring Vinny back up, to talk a little bit more about the economic impact of all of these trips. So I'll give the time to him. Thank you.
Yeah, what I would like to do is really highlight, you know, some areas of real pride in this system as we look at it. We know that employment is always a big conversation, getting people to jobs, and really seeing those numbers, both for Prescott and Prescott Valley are very significant, but we also recognize the economic development in shopping and recreation and getting people out and about in the community. One of the main parts is, again, how do we make this sustainable? And again, through SIMPO's leadership, we have already been meeting with a list of stakeholders and community members, and we're here today to also include the City of Prescott government in that conversation. But as you look at this list, these are the people that we've had the conversations with. When we talk with, sit down with the director of the Health Department, Leslie Horton, you know, she's a real champion for public transit and the quality of life that that does. When we look at higher education at Yavapai College and Prescott College, and I haven't included Emery Riddle, even though we've started those conversations, they're not in the zone yet, but they definitely desire to be in the zone. And then, as Pedro alluded to, the VA being the number-one destination, again, Carol Benedict, when she was in the position locally at U.S. Vets, was again a champion, and still is a champion for public transit. And you go down to the bottom of the list at NACOG Workforce Development, many of us know Terry Drew, again, another public transit champion. So wanted to highlight those. Over a three-year period, we're going to provide through public transit a direct investment of $3.6 million. The national average, they say, is you multiply that times 4, and that is the economic value to the community. So if you multiply that number, and you'll get your 12, $13 million number. The $3.6 million is the purchasing of the vehicles in the state of Arizona. It's hiring employees to operate it. Right now, this system is run by around 20 employees that include drivers, dispatchers, managers. Again, these are our local folks getting to work, having jobs, and then the mechanics that take to run the system. All those things are in this community. So again, that $3.6 million direct investment multiplies for the City of Prescott and surrounding communities over a three-year period into around $13, $14 million. I want to pause there before we move on to our other project updates. If there's any other questions, Mr. Mayor, Council, about public transit that Pedro and/or I can answer for you?
I will say that I think the first year or two, you were running around $44 per ride. So with the increase in ridership, you've cut that pretty much in half, down to about $20 per ride. But if your average fare is running $1.5, something like that, you've got a pretty big delta to try to fill. So with that said, you must have some business plan to indicate at what level of ridership, how many weeks or months or years down the road you're going to reach a nexus that you feel is sustainable, and then also be able to find some additional revenue. So that would mean increasing fares, or finding other additional revenue coming in, whether it's through other stakeholders who want to support the program, or coming to the local municipalities to ask for taxpayer subsidies to make the ongoing program sustainable.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll take a swing at it and then let Pedro jump in, if that's okay. That initial number that was a higher dollar amount, you are correct, it was higher, that, keep in mind, was the initial capital purchases. There were no transit vehicles to start with. So that, that higher dollar came into that part of that equation. So as Pedro alluded to, the last quarter doesn't include those capital purchases. If we go to purchase additional capital improvements, it would then increase those dollar amounts. Then on to your last point, Mr. Mayor. That's, again, that list that I gave on the prior slide, this one. You know, we're really putting a lot of energy into the partners and the stakeholders in our community, not only sitting around the table, but putting skin in the game, to ensuring that, again, if this is a partnership with Yavapai College, how do we make this so that it's sustainable for the entire community, including their faculty and their students? So that's really absolutely a high priority, but let me let Pedro jump in here and answer a little bit more of that technical question that you had.
I think what pretty, with what Vinny provided was pretty good. Probably just to add to that, so the way that funding gets to this region is through the 5307 Urbanized Area Formula Grant Program. What that provides us is, yes, there is some disparity there, but what it does is, in terms of operating dollars, that program provides 50% of operating costs. So it covers 50%, and we're left with that 50% to be able to provide, right, as a local match. So the, in terms of capital improvement, even, gosh, some of these dollars go into pedestrian and bike to provide connectivity with public transportation, including also vehicles. Our local match is 20% of that total cost. So the subsidy is the 80%. So that kind of brings a lot of, a lot of value and a lot of, I guess, support from the federal government to be able to provide these differing services. But I hope that answered your question. Anything else?
Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. When people think of public transportation, they envision what's called the empty bus syndrome. I think we've all seen it in municipalities where there's one person asleep on a large bus, and this program sounds like it is a solution to that, that it's geared to meeting the public's need. And it sounds like, have you calculated, like, how many vehicles a day you get off the road? Because it sounds like it gets a lot of vehicles off the road and helps improve our congestion by providing this service. Thank you.
Yeah, most, sorry, was that a question or?
Well, I'm sorry. How many vehicles a day do you think this program might get off the road? Have you been able to calculate that data?
Sure, and I think we have to understand that this is still a demonstration project, but I'm with you. We have to understand that this is a demonstration project and that we still have yet to define what are the actual demand for each of these microtransit zones. So right now, we haven't plateaued. We haven't seen where ridership stays at a certain level. We have been increasing quarter after quarter after quarter, and I guess I don't want to provide you that number just yet, but I think it's substantial. And I think it's substantial to make an impact here in this community in a variety of ways. So, thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
To follow up with Kathy Rusing's question, I think the answer right now is, in 75% of the cases, or 73% of the cases, you don't take any cars off the road, because you had something like 26%.
And that's, and that's my point. Ridership is too.
I would like to see where, you know, whether it's workforce, housing, anything else, anything we can do to integrate plans together to take people off the road reduces the we can do to integrate plans together to take people off the road reduces the road grading from going to F, like it's headed with 89 or Willow Creek. So one of the metrics I'd like to see is, can you calculate, if you've got three people in a van, you save two trips, two cars. So two cars come off the road. And what I would encourage you is to report on that number because I think that.
I guess you can almost calculate it freehand with 43,000 trips, right? So if you have 43 or almost 43,000 trips in a year, I think you can kind of calculate that if you're going to work each day. So that's a lot of trips, a lot of vehicles.
I don't know how you would.
How would you?
43,000 trips by the van?
So we provided 43,000 rides, so riders.
Right.
So from origin to destination.
But if it's 43,000 riders, one at a time in a van, you haven't taken any cars off the road.
As I mentioned.
If you've got five in the van, you're taking four off the road.
That's exactly right. So with Prescott Valley, we have at 50% of the time that we're providing shared rides. So the capacity of that vehicle is 10, right? Nine people plus the one, the wheelchair accessible location. So you're looking at four or five rides.
Are you sure?
So per.
When you say it's a shared ride, is that two in the van or is that half the capacity of the van?
At least two or more. Yep. So it could be three, it could be four, it could be seven. So at least two or more, or more per each vehicle.
I'd like to see how many cars you can take off the road.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Pedro, just for the public's sake, how are we getting this information out to the public that this service is available? And how does the public contact you for a ride?
Sure.
Share that publicly so that gets out into the community.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, so we're, we have a call center. You can call us Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Our phone number is 1-866-YAVTRAN, 928-8726. Or you can request your trips on the YavConnect mobile app at any time. So you can pre-book those rides or you can request those rides same day. We also have our marketing planner, Leslie Contreras. She's able to post on social media and on her website as, gosh, all of our posts, all of our messaging. So she's been able to do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, can you tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. Pedro, I've got a question. I obviously have not seen your business plan, but I was curious. Currently, this is an on-demand, if you will, system. So they call for the ride. Do you have a business model based on, it looks wildly popular.
Yeah.
Is your business model in the future based on the data? At any time, a bus service with more, you know, something like, I don't know, just some kind of a transit system that would be open to the public, that you have designated stops in the different, instead of a call-on-demand type service?
Sure. So the nice thing about this service model, so from the phased transit plan, what was suggested was this recommendation of public transportation mode. So right now, for example, with the town of Prescott Valley, there are certain areas where we can't provide, or where there is no accessibility, right, in terms of sidewalks, getting people to certain areas. And there's a mass, heavy infrastructure that is required to provide that different type of service, if you'd like, you know, bus stops or a fixed route. And so what this iteration of public transportation, again, this demonstration project, is to gather data. This is the first iteration of public transportation in the Simpo region, and therefore, you know, data is king. We wanted to understand, where do people need to go? What kind of services do they need in terms of, for people with disabilities? Where do we need to go? What communities do we need to serve? So this is, this is just a demonstration project, kind of data gathering, to understand what this is going to look like in the long term. Maybe after a five-year, short-range transportation plan, we can define clearly on, hey, moving forward, this is what it needs to be, but as right now, it's just a demonstration project.
You know, I can remember years past that this issue has come up. Many years ago, I remember, I think it was the Silvernail family came in front of the council at the time and wanted to expand a bus service. And I think everybody ran the numbers. It sounded great. But at the end of the day, it's never profitable. It's always upside down. And I think, as you said, the infrastructure was the big part of encouraging, you know, massive transit system in this region.
Yeah. Excellent point. And maybe to add to that, you know, with public transportation, you're looking at the full economic impact, right? For example, a couple of examples in Prescott Valley, there was a particular chiropractor practice where, gosh, we're providing a lot of rides to this area. They called us, said, "Thank you for getting all of our patients in." So if you're looking at that $2 affair, right, it's, you know, very minimal. But if you're looking at the total impact of that, right, you're looking at $100 a console, you're looking at more of that, that's what we're doing with transit. We're either spending money or we're making money, right? So it's kind of that full.
Well, one last question. Have you ever considered in your business model, maybe reaching out to somebody like the Veterans Administration or the hospital, some of the heavy users, to provide some kind of a small subsidy because they are providing a service?
And, yeah, excellent. So our regional development manager, he is actually working every day to get us some partnerships going on. That was a list of them right here. Again, we, all of these organizations and more need public transportation to get people where they need to go. But yeah, that is continuous that we're working on.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ruasing.
Thank you. I can see that local community support is very important for your funding, but have you reached out to ADOT? Do they fund these kind of things?
So we deal directly with federal government. ADOT is more of the pass-through agency for funding. In our case, for the 5307 program, there are slight other avenues that we can partner with them on, such as providing services under the 5310 program, which provides services for people with disabilities and seniors. So there is some opportunity.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you very much, Pedro. And just in closing, to add one thing to, Councilman can tell me about a business plan. So Simpo adopted, and I have an extra copy if any of the council members want one, or we have a link on our website. But this is the business plan that was adopted in 2020 that analyzed the region, analyzed the numbers, looked at everything from the nuts and bolts of the operation, the cost of service, the population, the needs. So this is our business plan. Happy to share that with you. We encourage you to flip through it, look through it. This is the business plan. And then, as Pedro mentioned, again, we're going to continue to update that. We know that there's a lot of evolution in that. All good questions. With that said, though, let me move on to just a few things, and then I'll turn it over to Bren. Just wanted to show a map. I know it's a little bit faded, but this is our existing map. You can see Chino Valley in yellow, kind of to the north. Here in the bottom right, our bottom-left corner with the city of Prescott, to your right, Prescott Valley, and then Dewey-Humboldt. Again, that's our 400 square miles. In Yavapai County, for transportation planning purposes, you're either covered by Simpo or you're covered by the Northern Arizona Council of Governments. It's one or the other. So what we've just done recently by action of the Simpo Executive Board is we have reevaluated the boundary of Simpo, the planning area that has been in place for 20 years. And that boundary is scheduled to change July 1st. Why this is critically important is, we realize the urbanized center remains around the greater Prescott region, but we realize that the 25,000 people that live in western and southern Yavapai County access so many of the services in Prescott. So if we're, if we're truly being regional planners, you look at the I-40, you look at the I-17, you look at all of Highway 69, all of Highway 169, this becomes very important in the planning that we do, that it is much more regional and comprehensive. Would like to acknowledge Mayor Good and thank him for serving on the Simpo Executive Board. He is currently the Secretary Treasurer. He is joined by Mayor Hughes from Dewey-Humboldt. He is the Vice Chair of Simpo. The current chair is Supervisor Craig Brown, representing Yavapai County. And we also have members, Vice Mayor Armstrong from the town of Chino Valley, Mayor Palguda from the town of Prescott Valley. And we have a sixth seat for the state of Arizona. And unfortunately, our recent member after six years, Gary Knight, just recently passed away unexpectedly. So incredible transportation champion, but he is being replaced by a gentleman by the name of Sam Elters. That position represents Mojave County, Yavapai County, La Paz, and Yuma County. So Sam will be the representative on behalf of Arizona and will sit on the Simpo Board. I've worked with Sam. He's really great to work with. I'd like to invite Bren Stottler up to give an update on some specific planning projects.
City Clerk, do we have any public comments that are specifically directed at public transit?
None that specifically state public transit. They just all say Simpo.
All right. Well, then we'll wait till the end of the presentation and take them at that time. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Great to be with you this afternoon. I wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the work that Simpo's been focused on most recently. For those of you who have been involved in the general plan process for the city of Prescott, or the town of Prescott Valley, town of Chino Valley, or the comprehensive plan for the county, Simpo undertakes a simpler, a similar process every five years. We are mandated to update our long-range transportation plan by federal mandate every five years. State statute is what guides your city, town, and county general plans. They're very similar, though, and they are very much aligned with one another. Our transportation plan is a 25-year forward look. The general plan is typically looking for a 10-year forward look in land development and uses. The transportation plan is updated more often because development immediately impacts the way that people get around the region. So when we're looking at the long-range transportation plan, which, by the way, we brought you a copy, it's a big body of work. It's great bedtime reading, get right to sleep. But it is full of great information. It talks about how our regional transportation network is operating. It looks at the investments we've made in that transportation network, and it helps us to prioritize the investments for the coming term. The plan is, again, updated every five years, but it forecasts forward, the 25-year forward look. And by saying that, we mean that we work with your development teams to understand the trajectory of your approved development, the velocity of your building permits, and how those additional cars are impacting our regional network. So this is a hugely important process. We're just kicking off the 2050, and we will be working on that for the next year. You'll have plenty of opportunities, and we probably will come and present specifically on that plan when we get a little further along. We do have to have that plan accepted by federal highways in order for Simpo to continue the work that we do. So that process will culminate about a year from now when we get that approval and we take the draft plan to our executive board. And along those lines, this is what our long-range plan really brings us. Not to be cheeky, but it's a roadmap for the future. We like to use a comment that Councilmember Gamboge has brought to us many times because it really applies to this plan. You start at the beginning of this plan with the end in mind. What does the 25-year data point look like when it comes to how many cars are actually going to be on the road? We have to be able to project development. We have to look at commercial opportunities. We have to understand who our large employers are and how those folks impact the regional road network. So we do want to start at the beginning with the end in mind. Obviously, the whole process is designed to elevate community dialogue. We want the community to be in that conversation, to understand where the pain points are throughout the regional network, not just on Highway 69, which is something familiar to all of us, but we want to talk about all roadways and where are those pain points and how do we elevate or modernize those situations? And the end result is, of course, that we establish a broader, more complete vision for the regional transportation network that is aligned with projected development. So what else is happening? We've got a few of our logo-branded plans here, and you probably recognize a couple of them. So we're going to start with the obvious. Sundog Connector, this is the plan that was generated over the past 18 months. Sorry, we don't have it bound for you at this point, but we did want to provide the opportunity for the council to have access to that other than by electronic means. So briefly, I will just help you get sighted here. On the left-hand side of the screen is the terminus at the roundabout at Sundog Ranch Road by the Justice Center. And on the right-hand, most right-hand point is the Hobby Lobby Commercial Center where Sundog Ranch Road terminates. The study area is along the red Alternative 3 corridor line. It was a robust public engagement process that got us to Alternative 3. We had two large public meetings where the community really came out, and we really appreciated everything that they brought to this process. At the end of the day, the Simpo Board opted to vote to receive this plan. Basically, that means for now it is shelved. The design concept report and environmental overview will inform any future planning that might happen in this corridor. That is yet to be determined. Currently, there isn't political will to move forward with construction, so that is basically where this plan sits at this time. And again, these processes are long, they're involved, they may be popular, they may be unpopular, but what do they bring us to? They help us to ask the right questions and answer the right questions. So where are we going? What did we find out about Sundog Connector? Well, we found out a lot about community opinion, which was valuable.
Excuse me, Bren, but Councilmember Ruasing has a question.
Of course. Thank you. I was looking at your 25-year plan, just in this PowerPoint presentation. Do you have any plans for roads in our more regional roads in our growth corridor to the north to connect Chino, Prescott Valley, Prescott? Because I didn't see anything on that topic here. I was kind of disappointed. I was eagerly looking towards something.
So that is, that is exactly the function of this planning process, that we're kicking off the 25-year forward look. It looks at the state route system, which of course, ADOT is responsible largely for the state route system. But it also looks at all of the other facilities that connect arterially, that bring us to our commercial environments. All of those roadways, 24 significantly regional roads are found in this plan, and projects that would improve performance of those roadways are prioritized in this book, in this plan. The new plan will have the same prioritized list of projects, and it will look at all 24 of those regionally significant roads, and it will suggest optimizations to make everything flow a little bit better. So I don't know if I answered your question, but all of our regional network is found in that book.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Bren, can I just get a clarification? Did I hear you correctly say that there was the political will to move forward with Sundog Connector? Is that what you said?
I said the lack of political will.
Lack of political, thank you. I want to make sure I heard you correctly. Thank you.
Yeah. So moving on, one of the takeaways from our Sundog Connector process was, we heard a lot, from a lot of people about fixing Highway 69. It's important to note that in all of the years of existence of Simpo, SR 69 has been in some form.
Bren, Kathy Ruasing has a quick question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I just wanted to go back to the Sundog Connector. You know, I affectionately refer to it now as the zombie road, the road that refuses to die. You say there's no political will. 10 years ago, you know, it was in our general plan, the Sundog Connector, and it was very unpopular then, and it's still unpopular now, especially when we are trying to develop a regional-state park, and it's going to cut right through our regional-state park and bypass our commercial corridor on 69, among other reasons. It's going to encourage development if that road goes through and more water congestion. So my question is, why are we talking about it? And why do we still have it in our general plan? Because apparently our element, transportation element is like, just kind of taken from the Simpo plan. And people don't want it in our general plan. It was in our general plan 10 years ago, and now we have another general plan that's supposed to be forward-looking, and it's still in the general plan. So I would just like to say, as your elected official, I'm trying my hardest to get it out of the general plan, but I'm not having very much success. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Ruasing. I really can't comment on whether or not it is kept in the general plan. For the purposes of Simpo, the 25-year forward look addresses three primary areas. For the purposes of Simpo, the 25-year forward look addresses three primary areas: expansion, modernization, and preservation. The traffic modeling that is in, that is behind the data that goes into a final plan of this nature looks at how every facility in the region is operating and how we might optimize the, the way that facility is operating and move more people more conveniently with less congestion. Sun Dog Connector hasn't been voted on by municipalities who are involved in that project. We're not here to determine whether a project is alive or dead. We plan them, we study them.
Bren, I'm sorry. Lois, go ahead. She has a question.
Thank you. I think there is some developments, so I would ask if, since Kathy asked a question, I think, and the audience is interested in the answer, I would ask Chelsea if you wouldn't mind coming up and give us an update on the general plan in Sun Dog.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Chelsea Walton, Community Development Director. So the question was asked if the Sun Dog Connector by name was mentioned in the general plan. As you all know, the general plan is going through a update similar to what Simpo's kicking off, and as the draft sits right now, the name Sun Dog Connector and the maps associated with it would not be included in addition to various other projects specifically, as those are outside of what has been entitled and approved to date. But that does bring, call attention to the fact that Simpo is part of our general plan. We talk a lot about what they're working on and reference by linkage to what the plans they have going on currently. So I hope that kind of answers the question.
So let me just recap. As of today, I thought they were no longer in our general plan that we're in the midst of working on. Is that true?
In the current draft, at the last general plan meeting, there was consensus to not have, have that in there.
But it's still alive and well and moving, so stay tuned, everyone. Keep involved.
Okay. Yeah, by virtue of the, the regional transportation plan and the studies that have been conducted. All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rusing.
Oh, I would just like to comment that our, our general plan is supposed to reflect the values of our community, and it's voted on by the community and needs community support. And so I, I feel that it's very important that we have community input and listen to the community as far as controversial issues such as this road is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Back to the SR 69 corridor master plan. 17 miles from Dewey-Humboldt to Prescott is being studied. It's been divided into nine segments so that prioritized improvements can be identified that are addressing safety conditions, congestion, the endless stream of lights going through Prescott Valley, which I want to just anecdotal evidence here that it can be done. I was heading to Phoenix on Friday night, and I didn't stop for one light. That has only happened twice in my 30 years in Prescott. As a transportation planner, I was pretty geeked out. I called my, I called my boss immediately. So what we're looking for here is to identify and prioritize improvements. We want to, of course, take care of all of our front-facing businesses along Highway 69. This is our economic development corridor. This is the most important economic driver of our region for all of our communities, frankly. And it also includes 11 miles of essential freight corridor as designated by ADOT, and not a lot of people know that, that we have 11 miles of our Highway 69 from 17 to Prescott. 11 miles of that is designated as essential freight corridor. Here is a, an image of the nine segments that the consultant team has identified, and the traffic modelers are hard at work right now, coming up with some really creative solutions. If you haven't taken our SR 69 survey yet, and I want to just boast that we have received over 1,400 survey responses for this plan alone. So catch that QR code up at the top if you're not tech savvy or don't want to deal with that. Please just go to simpo.org/SR69. We've got a whole page with plan information on it, and you can also take that survey there. It's open for a few more days. We would love for you to get your voices in the mix. And again, what does this larger-level planning bring us? This is the economic driver corridor of our region, so economic development is so important when it comes to roadway planning. And then we have ACT UP, which is our Active Transportation Plan. And yes, we have the city's ad for their bike event here and a picture that I took of the group that coalesced around the Bike to City Hall event, and this was a great way to celebrate Bike Month. Saw a couple of our council members there, saw some of our community bicycle activists. It was great to be there. So what is ACT UP doing? ACT UP is an acronym for Active Community Transportation Unified Plan. We're looking to inventory all of the bicycle and pedestrian facilities in the region. That means city of Prescott, town of Prescott Valley, town of Chino Valley, town of Dewey-Humboldt, even the unincorporated county has this, some of these facilities, and we want to look at where those are. We want to find where they may be close to connecting, and we want to bridge those gaps. So we're helping to make cyclists and walkers more safe in the region. We're also looking at school campuses and the one-mile radius around those because those are biking and walking zones. We want our students to get to school safely.
Excuse me, Bren. Councilmember Montoya has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Bren, I'm super excited about this. Not surprisingly, that's my son in the picture there in the yellow shirt, so I, I'm super passionate about, to me, transportation means so much more than just cars. It's, it's the multimodal thing. I'm curious, what has the adoption rate been on your ACT UP survey so far?
The ACT UP survey has really lagged behind. As of, I think, last week, we only had about 150 responses, and I have been everywhere talking about this plan, and I hope you all have too. So if you know cyclists, if you know people that prefer to walk sometimes, this is about transportation choices. This is about lifestyle.
So I, I will continue to promote it as well. I, I think it's important to know that, I think, when we think of this multimodal transportation, it doesn't just impact people who are on bicycles or people who are walking, but it's also a greater awareness around how motorists are interacting with those people and the degree of safety, or sometimes unfortunately, lack thereof, that they feel on a bicycle or walking. And so I'm really supportive of this kind of endeavor, and whatever city council can do to kind of help push that mission forward, let us know.
Thank you, Councilman. Also want to mention, this isn't the final opportunity to speak out on bicycle and pedestrian. There are going to be a couple of public meetings. We haven't gotten to the point where we could unveil the network map. So the, in the background, our modelers have been working on the network mapping and also coming up with, with suggested improvements to help make this network stronger and more complete. And again...
Councilwoman Moore, you had a question for Bren.
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Bren, I'm also very interested in the pedestrian facilities on this slide. I've talked with our Public Works Department, and I know as a city, we have limited funds available for sidewalks. And one of my priorities as a council member is Wetstein, which connects Ruth Street to Willow Creek. And this is adjacent to the high school, and it's a heavily trafficked road. It's a very narrow road, and there are no sidewalks on that road. And along Ruth Street, we have a lot of care centers where residents walk to the Walmart on Gale Gardner, and they walk on Wetstein with all that high school traffic, with their little buggies to go get their groceries back and forth. Is there funding available through Simpo for sidewalks? Because there isn't a lot of funding in the city for sidewalks. How does that work?
Thank you for the question. That's a great question. What this plan actually does is provide a basis for those requests. There is legitimately a ton of funding right now that has this bicycle and pedestrian nexus involved, and we want to definitely tap those opportunities. You will definitely see on the anecdotal map that is included in the survey that people have commented on that area, and I would invite you to do that. And you don't, you don't, you can respond to the survey more than once. So if you know of a place that's, other than the place you pinned, that you dropped a pin on our map, please respond again. It's not going to lock you out. We want to hear about all of the experiences and where those little pain points are so that we can provide attention to areas like that, the, the one that you're talking about, Councilman.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful information for the public, that they know that they have a voice and that they can help contribute to maybe future sidewalks for vulnerable areas.
And Simpo is in a driver's seat when it comes to tapping that type of grant funding. We, we really are. We, we are sort of the organization that can go directly to the federal government for programs that are designed to support these types of improvements and make that, that direct ask. So we always ask our member agencies to be involved in those discussions. We want to know where your priority projects are, that you've, if you have an area that you know you've dreamt up, what we could do with some pedestrian facilities here, please drop a pin on that map. Thank you.
And I want to make a statement just because we've had a number of surveys, whether it was the Broad Community Survey that we did a year or two ago, or the survey we did on the redevelopment of the old City Hall property, or the survey that we offered for comment on widening of the Narrows on 89, going through the Granite Ells. There's so many people that don't bother to take these surveys, but the results of those surveys are then used to establish policy. And those policies are then voted on and enacted. And then we hear after the fact, people criticizing the decisions that were made when they never took the time to be involved in getting their interests and their concerns included. So I want to make sure that people understand how important these surveys are. Take the survey. Let your voice be heard so that when we make the decisions on policy, they reflect your interests and not have to deal with the consequences of people that don't get involved, but they want to be able to criticize the results that the council makes after utilizing that data for some decisions on how we proceed. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I was going to touch on the sidewalk issue, too. As you know, we're a very historic town, and we have a lot of older areas here in Prescott that just need sidewalks. And for example, Park Avenue, people on Park Avenue would like to walk downtown to participate in the activities, and there, there's no sidewalks. You're out in the road, and after parades, people are walking out, out in the roads to get to their parking, their cars up Park Avenue. So how do we get this initiated? Do we meet with you? Do you do a survey? Do we fill out a form? Because if there's all this federal funding, I, I feel that sometimes we just don't know how to ask.
Thank you, Councilmember Rusing. We are working with your Public Works and Community Development Departments all of the time. So we are familiar with the fact that you guys have a project list at Public Works. Obviously, that's anything from a small sidewalk improvement to a huge road project. But we are always in conversation with your Public Works and Community Development Departments to see how we can work together to ensure that the improvements that you need are the ones that are asked for. Hope that answers the question.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, I'm going to echo everything Kathy just said because that's all true, but how do you, just to expound upon that, how do you rate these? I mean, do we have a ratings from 1 to 10 where you put a sidewalk project before another sidewalk project?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. This, the RTP, the Long Range Plan, helps us with that methodology. So all of our plans filter into this RTP, including a safety plan that I'm going to talk about in just a moment. But how we determine the priority level of certain projects is, has there been an injury accident there? Has there been a pedestrian accident there? Is this an area heavily populated by vulnerable road users? Think about the area from the, off of the Willow Lake Roundabout where you're heading down towards Prescott Lake Parkway, and you've got all of those flexible bollards, I'll call them. Really, it's just to raise awareness. I'm not sure what the actual protective, you know, effect would be, but we, those types of improvements are the very soft, light scratch of the surface to a full-on pedestrian improvement project that would have protected, you know, pedestrian bays and a mid-block, protected mid-block crossing. Those are some examples.
So remind me real quick, I think we have a software, Gwen, you would know this, that rates our sidewalks. Is that correct? And is that the correspondence that you two do together? Is that the, what was it called? Is it just for pavement? I thought it included sidewalks.
You are correct, Mayor Protem. They call it RAS, R-A-S, software. Our inventory is going to start in June, and this will be the first time that we're including sidewalks and gutters. In the past, we've only inventory asphalt condition, but we will be inventorying for missing sidewalk as well as condition of existing sidewalk, and then that'll give us a good foundation for seeking some of these grants. Simpo's an excellent partner for the city in terms of seeking and receiving grant money. Sometimes they'll even hire the consultant to fill out the applications for us. All we have to do is identify the needs. So our RAS inventory, which will be taking place over the next six months, is going to give us that information. So I think we're well on the way to taking advantage of these opportunities that we have in front of us.
So Gwen, in the rating system, did you start at the city core and work your way out? Because I, again, I'm a little impartial with the historic area, as you know. But we are in need because our subdivisions, or they're not even subdivisions, the growth down here that happened, you know, 100 and something years ago, did not include sidewalks.
We, we will inventory and evaluate all public rights of way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So once again...
I want to emphasize, we're one hour into our two-hour study session. We have another agenda item that we need to get to. So I would ask the council members to keep your questions related to the topic of Simpo, and if we can proceed, we can get a lot, we've got a lot of public comment here that I want to take, too. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, if you're not into the QR code, you can jump on simpo.org/ACTUP. There's a page full of information for you there, including a link to the survey. There's also general, general comment forums that you can just send us an email with narrative. Again, planning brings us, in the terms of active transportation, a more active community that's safer while they're doing their favorite activities. Finally, I just want to reflect that at the end of last year, we completed a regional safety plan. This is a five-year data crunch of all crash data from 2017 to 2021. We also brought you a copy of this. All of these are available, by the way, on our website through hyperlinks and available for download. Again, five years of crash data reporting from all of our public safety agencies. We make this plan and all of its data backdrop available to your traffic and engineering team so that you can focus on those crashes that occurred in your jurisdiction. Prioritized projects are also organized in this plan, and there is a ton of grant money available for safety. So we also pursue those options, and this plan gives us the basis to do that. It also gives your Public Works team the basis to work with us so that we can make sure that the most unsafe conditions that were found in the city of Prescott through this plan are the first ones addressed. Just to get a little more granular, we've got a table showing you basically the breakdown through the Simpo planning area.
Bren, Councilwoman Furworth has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Bren, I have heard from a lot of members of the public that the last year or two on the roads have been even wilder and wackier than it was all the way up until 2021. Is it possible, or is your recommendation, as we put forward for grants to do these kinds of safety improvements, that we incorporate even more recent trends if it backs up raising us up on the priority list? And then how do we go about getting the most recent data other than having our PD department comb their records? Is there a system you all use to get it, that we could get 22 and 23?
Yes, we actually have did an addendum to our agreement with our consultant on this plan and had them actually add 22 and 23 into the analysis. So while we don't have that reflected in this granular data, the output from the, the base plan, they have gone on to actually do the crash data analysis for 22 and 23. That allowed your Public Works Department to make an ask for Highway Safety Improvement Plan funding to make some improvements that were identified in the city of Prescott. So I guess just to, to wrap it up, I would call everybody's attention to the lower right-hand corner, region-wide, a total of 8,256 from non-injury to fatal crashes, and 56 of those were fatals. And ADOT, as a state agency, adopts a Vision Zero goal, which is to reduce that 56 in the Simpo region to zero. We, by extension, adopt that same goal, which is why we pursue safety so seriously. So I would go up to the middle of that graph where you've got the city of Prescott, when the total column having the lion's share of incidents. You have a busy community. You've got a lot of people coming here every day. 19 of those 56 fatals occurred in the city of Prescott. 19 of those 56 fatals occurred in the city of Prescott. We'd love to see that be zero the next time we present on safety. So again, these larger plans, they bring us together to have a conversation to make a safer community. And we really do appreciate the member agencies leaning in to safety first. It is the primary goal of Simpo, to create a safe roadway network. With that, I would offer any additional time for questions, but since we're short on time, I'll invite Vinnie back up.
So we only have a couple of slides left, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just as we wrap up, I hope that we've provided a well-rounded, robust view. By no means is it exhaustive. Simpo's up to a lot more than this. The questions all were spot on today, very engaging. I encourage council, yes, to work with your staff, but we're available to you also. However, we can help achieve city of Prescott's goals and objectives. But to wrap this up, we realize the value and the impact in the work that transportation plays throughout the community, on its people, but most especially on the environment. I'd like to acknowledge, I know JD's in the room, we also have Tammy, but we do have an environmental committee that works with us to provide input over the last seven years. And I just listed a few, and sorry if I missed a few others in the audience, but their voice has been critical to understand in the planning process, how do we acknowledge the impact on the greater environment? With that said, we have taken upon to do an environmental overview of our region as it relates to transportation. Two things that are going to come out of that that we're happy to take the lead on is looking at doing a regional trails plan. Again, work with Mayor, Council, and your staff on that. I've been meeting with the manager prior to, welcome to your, being the new manager, but worked with Tyler and staff, and then also from the other cities and municipalities. So we've been starting those conversations, and we hope to be able to move that forward. We want to acknowledge the city of Prescott and really leading the way as it relates to the trails, Chris Hoskins and your dedication through Joe Baines and others. So we just want to be able to support that and bring that on to a more regional level. And then the other thing we're looking forward to kicking off later this year is a regional wildlife corridor study. We have been working closely with game and fish. We, again, realize the impact of development and growth that that plays throughout the community. And again, our role in both these conversations, I don't stand up here as an expert of either, but I do stand up here as the regional organization, and again, attempting to exercise leadership on behalf of the region. Final slide. So I would like to formally invite you, Mayor and Council, Mayor's been invited, but invite the rest of the council and those listening, that Simpo is playing host to something called the Arizona Rural Transportation Summit. This is the 25th year. Every, about every six, seven years, we get to play host to this. This is a statewide conference. This is a big deal. We're expecting to have about 400 in attendance here. The main purpose of the Rural Summit, it started 25 years ago, and it started at a time when rural Arizona said, look, if we don't stand together, Phoenix and Tucson, by just population, we're going to get left in the dust. And the decision-makers at that time said, hey, let's do a few things about it. Number one is create an organization called the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, or RTAC. And then the number two thing was to establish this summit, this annual conference. So the purpose of it is to meet with our state legislators, to set an agenda for the following year, and to bring in our local legislators, all of you from across Arizona and other key members. So we are proud to be the host, October 16th through the 18th, at the Prescott Resort, and really hope you can all join us. With that said, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Vinnie, for that update. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of moving parts that are in motion. And boy, I can't tell you how happy I am to hear that ADOT is going to finally do, to start construction on the widening of 69 in front of Frontier Village after waiting over 10 years. But that's scheduled to begin at the end of, end of June or the first week of January.
You are correct, sir.
So, finally. Let's go ahead and take public comment now. Thank you.
Dan Pryock?
Good afternoon. How's everyone doing today? Good, I hope. I'm here to speak on, based on my approximately three years of engagement with Simpo on the SunDog Connector project, and I'm hoping for more viable public engagement on Simpo's behalf because the response I've gotten from Simpo has been largely a talk-to-the-hand response. It's been very difficult. I've made two public records requests and gotten incorrect and partial information on both of those, and I, I'd like to think that they can do a better job on that. Secondly, I'd like to ensure that, or do whatever I can to ensure that the SunDog Connector is not mentioned in the 25-year plan because, based on the public response in the 2013 study and the fact that the, the milestones cited in that study for the DCREO were not met when the DCREO was kicked off, that's a recent study, and despite that, it was pursued by Simpo. And public response this last time around, obviously, was notably negative also. And there's been a large regional effort put forward for the regional park. The SunDog would be a huge scar on that park, and I'd like to see the regional park given at least 10 years to mature the planning, start the process of improvements for the park, and gauge the effect of that park and the benefits to the larger community before anything's even considered, looked at in terms of the SunDog Connector for the future. So that's all I have to say on that issue. I would say the regional transit partners, everyone on that list should have a link on their site that says, do you need a ride to or from? And that would take it to your site. And sidewalk funding requests, I know that last June or July, Simpo had something where federal requests were being put in, and I had talked to the city rep at the TAC meeting at that time, and unfortunately, there wasn't much interest in stuff like that. But Simpo does come up with things like that a number of times over the course of a year where safety issues like that for moderate funding requests, you know, in the $1 or $2 million or less range, can be considered for federal funding. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Robert Forte?
Thank you. Appreciate it. My name is Robert Forte. I live in Yavapai Hills, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council, council people. I'm just going to make this brief. After all I've heard today, I rise in opposition to SunDog. The spokeswoman clearly said there's a lack of political will for it. She's absolutely correct. There is a lack of political will. I've been in this project only two years. Others have been involved with it 10 years and some even more. So I'm aware of that. After what I've heard today, I appreciate what everybody said. So at that point, I'm just going to say thank you, and I rest my case. Thank you.
Gary Anderson?
Hello, Mayor. Mayor, Council, and our new city manager, out of frying pan into the fire. Welcome to Prescott. Really good news today to learn, SunDog disconnect language has been eliminated from the current general plan draft, 2025 general plan. If that language returns in that general plan, it'll be challenged at the ballot box in November. You guys all know that. SunDog disconnect should also be dropped from the 2025-2050 Simple Regional Transportation Plan, rejected in 2013 SunDog Connector Study between the city and ADOT, recently rejected again. Simpo's open houses, the two open houses for SunDog, overwhelmingly negative in terms of this project, before we considered the $151 million cost, of which only $22 million would be paid by Prescott Valley. So anyway, I heard Vinnie mention a few minutes ago, Simpo is working on regional trail plans. Does anyone see a conflict in terms of working on trail plans and proposing a four-lane highway being built 3.6 miles through a Glassford Dells Regional Park? I'm not, I'm not getting, you know, which way is it? Anyway, a group of Yavapai Hills residents recently hiked with Councilman Gamboji out to the end of Klein Mesa to take a look, to see the lay of the land up there. And I want to find out if the city may be interested in charting emergency escape routes from various communities in Prescott from a safety standpoint. It may be something that the Public Works and Simpo could work on. We certainly would be very helpful in Yavapai Hills if needed. But thank you so much. And again, glad that language is out of the general plan. Please keep it that way.
Michael Panish?
My parents already said I had bad handwriting. It's Parrish. I'm sorry. Anyway, Mike Parrish in Prescott. How are you guys? I was ready to come up here swinging. We heard Simpo was going to be making a presentation. We thought, okay, it's son of SunDog, that somehow that was going to be coming out, they're going to be promoting it. I was really happy to see Brian up there saying that, in making a public statement, that there was strong, no public will, I think is the word she used. I'm sorry? Political, yeah. Glad to hear that. I wish they would just take that entire study and put it somewhere where it can't be seen again or mentioned again. We don't want this ever brought up again. Talked about the regional park, talked about trails, sidewalks, just put it to rest. At the executive board meeting in February, when they presented the DCREO, Mayor Good came out very strongly against it because of costs and said, in fact, he said the price was ludicrous, was the word he used. And I'm glad that Kathy Rusi here, Councilwoman Rusing, came out against it. I hope the majority of you are against it, and it stays out of the general plan, doesn't come up again. And we're happy to hear that. It seems like we're making progress, and we're wearing all these no stickers, but hopefully we'll be wearing yes stickers when the plan's coming up for a vote. I just wanted to show a hands, how many people here are against the SunDog Connector? Just raise your hand. Okay? And I'm sure a lot of them would support the general plan if the SunDog wasn't in it. Okay? So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Joanne Olers?
Hello, I'm, oops. Hello, I'm Joanne Olers, Prescott, Arizona, and I'm representing Save the Dells today. I was happy to hear Mr. Gagos mention the initiative for being facilitators of wildlife connectivity and safety as the road projects and other transportation projects are being considered. We also, of course, need to prevent motorist wildlife collisions, and the sooner we can start looking at the corridors and planning around the corridors would be the most beneficial. In addition to the agencies, particularly game and fish that was mentioned, I encourage Simpo and others to be working with Save the Dells, other smart professionals, nonprofits, and other citizens groups in our area. I think there's a lot to be offered by people who have had experience here, maybe wildlife biologists who are retired, would like to spend some time collaborating on some of the wildlife issues. And remember, wildlife is not just big animals, but it also involves smaller mammals, birds, and other interesting things that we would love to keep enjoying. Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the citizens that took the time out today to come and listen to the Simpo update, and your concerns about the SunDog Connector have certainly been noted by the council. So we'll move on to our second item on the agenda today and give that Watson Woods Preserve Conservation Easement opportunity to present and, and discuss and receive some public and public comment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Brian Reese, Water Resources Environmental Services Manager with Public Works for the city of Prescott. And yes, today we have a presentation for you on Watson Woods Riparian Preserve Conservation Easement. Joining me here at the podium today and assisting with this presentation is Michael Bird. He's the Executive Director for Prescott Creeks. And I think we have Joan Card with us, who also represents Prescott Creeks. I'll let Michael do some more introductions, that is Will, when he takes over. I'm going to start off this presentation with our agenda. We got an overview and background on the Riparian Preserve and the project that, that's being contemplated, the information on the Inlufi program, some project details, challenges and solutions that we've gone through, and then some financial information, and then questions and answers. So we have a limited time available today, so I will try to move through this as quick as possible. Please ask any questions that you have, but we will try to reserve some time for, at the end, for questions and answers. So with that, the Watson Wood Riparian Preserve, just upstream of Watson Lake, currently consists of 126 acres. On this exhibit that you're seeing here, the red dash line on the, the top one-third of the, of the image represents the northern boundary of the current preserve lease area, and then it's bounded by the black line on all three sides below that. So the Watson Woods Preserve was, was created in 1995 through a lease with the city. That lease was, went through 25 years, and in 2020 was reestablished for another 25 years, and that takes us to our current condition now. So it's been working as a preserve managed by Prescott Creeks through that time. Today's presentation, the project that we're going to be talking to you about, would increase the area from the red dash line northern boundary to the, to encompass the black line above it. So basically, the black line entire boundary around the site shown here would represent the entire area of the expanded preserve. It would encompass about approximately 160 acres. This slide shows the, the same area, and it shows the FEMA-designated Special Flood Hazard Area Zone for the area. It's both the red zone and the blue zone. So this slide is just to show that a significant portion of the area is encompassed in a FEMA flood zone, and as you can see, is subject to substantial flooding during monsoon season in our wetter time of the year. So the Watson Woods Preserve has been around for, for quite a while, but we do have quite a bit of public utilities that encompass the area. So in yellow, shown on the, the lower portion of the preserve, there's two different gas easements, or two different gas lines within easements in the area. There's also two separate water lines. The one shown on to the, the bottom image there, that represents the roster alignment right there, if it was to cross through, just to give you some perspective. And then the other 12-inch line runs through the Prescott Lakes Parkway alignment. We have sewer lines within the preserve, they're including a six-inch force main. They're shown here in green. And there's also electrical utilities in the easement. Up at the, at the top of the image, represented by the two dash lines, is the WAPA electrical easement. And then down on the, the bottom of the image, the red dash line that's kind of going diagonal, goes right through the, the roster alignment, is an APS, is an APS line. Currently, we're working with APS at this point in time to have that line relocated outside and around the preserve. That's represented by the red line that you can see on the eastern and the western boundary, and then following the southern boundary. So we're, we're coordinating with APS at this point in time to try to get that line relocated out of the preserve and around the preserve. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Michael for now so that he can talk a little bit about Prescott Creeks' relationship with the city and about this project in general.
Perfect. Thank you, Brian. My name is Michael Byrd.
Councilman Moore had a question first.
I apologize, Michael. I just wanted to ask Brian a quick question. The illustration with all of the different utility easements that are running through Watson Woods Riparian Preserve. When the centralization of the wastewater treatment facility occurs, will any of those wastewater lines that are currently in Watson Woods be decommissioned as that plant is decommissioned? Just a question to know if that might change anything in Watson Woods?
I'm being told no, they will not be decommissioned.
Thank you.
Perfect. My name is Michael Byrd. I'm the Executive Director for Prescott Creeks. And I just wanted to point out that we've got a team here with us for Prescott Creeks. Two of our board members, Bruce McKeeman and Andy Rorick, are also here with us. Our outside legal counsel, Joan Card, and then our partners with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Sally Diebolt, Jesse Rice, and Therese Carpenter. Should there be questions at the end, they may be better positioned to answer some of those questions than I am. So just a little bit of background on Prescott Creeks. We are a not-for-profit organization. We were established in 1990, and we have a mission to achieve healthy watersheds and clean water in central Arizona. Our working with the City of Prescott is not a new thing. We have been doing that since day one, primarily through the Granite Creek Trail that we now know as the Downtown Greenway. That was the project that our organization formed around. And that's the same area that the city just invested in with the revitalization project over the last couple of years. More recently, we have been leading or hosting the Granite Creek Cleanup that dates back to the, that dates back to the 1980s. That was passed to us in 2007. So this year was our 17th year of hosting the Granite Creek Cleanup. And then more specifically about Watson Woods Riparian Preserve that we're here to talk about today. And Brian's got the clicker, so he's going to, he's going to handle that for us. At Watson Woods Preserve, as Brian said, we've been managing the preserve since 1995 through our lease agreement with the City of Prescott. And I think our most notable efforts happened between 2009 and 2013 when we engaged in extensive ecological restoration work in the preserve. It was about a five-year project, a million and a half dollars, largely funded through grants from the Arizona Water Protection Fund and the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. And then the city also participated with in-kind services and cash contributions to that. The goals of those projects were largely to look at the function of Granite Creek and the riparian habitat that is associated there. The area historically was mined for sand and gravel, so has been completely disturbed over the last 150 years. And adding additional riparian habitat was a key element of that. And then regardless of the project, Prescott Creeks always includes education and community involvement so that our local residents build sweat equity in our projects. And hopefully that will help them persist over time. So some of the outcomes from the restoration project, these two images, the top image from 2009 is looking directly north off the Prescott Lakes Parkway. That's Granite Creek in a new location where Prescott Creeks placed it. Prior to our work in that area, the creek was shoved all the way over to the very left side of the floodplain, and very little water spread out on the floodplain, allowing riparian vegetation to grow. The 2022 photograph shows a dramatic change in that site. So much vegetation has grown up. We can't actually see the creek. It's there. But that vegetation is there because of the creek water and flood flows entering up onto the floodplain. So we've even got a 2023, not in this photograph, but the cottonwoods are a little bit bigger, providing great habitat for our local wildlife. So in 2002, really, is when the origin of the Inlufi Program started. We work with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to work with permities under the Clean Water Act who are assessed with compensatory mitigation. In 2013, we updated that program due to federal requirements. In meeting those new requirements, we established what we know as our enabling instrument. That enabling instrument was direct, Prescott Creeks was directed to develop that plan by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And it also directs Prescott Creeks to put together detailed plans for a mitigation site, which include a site protection instrument, which in our case is a conservation easement. So I think that leads us to our diagram here. I'm going to guess that most people in the room are not intimately familiar with Inlufi mitigation or mitigation banks. And so this is our attempt to kind of decode fairly esoteric program a little bit. In the gray boxes are represented kind of three main players. At the top, we have the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the U.S. EPA as the regulators, if you will, of the Clean Water Act. They also have a body called the Interagency Review Team that we work with very closely. The bottom left corner represents the impacts that happen in our environment. Permities, be they private developers, sometimes government entities will apply for a permit when they're building a road or building structures and can't avoid impacting a waterway or a wetland here in our community. So those are the permities. And then over on the bottom right is the Inlufi Program sponsor, our program site as Watson Woods Riparian Preserve.
Michael, Councilmember Rusi has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, Michael, how many of these programs are in Yavapai County or in the state of Arizona?
Yeah, that's a great question. At present, we have five. And I've got a slide, two slides from now that highlights that. So I think the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers works both with the permities to kind of try to minimize impacts, avoid impacts. And if those can't be avoided, that's when permities may be assessed compensatory mitigation. And the Corps also works with Prescott Creeks as the Inlufi sponsor to develop our program, provide credits for those types of mitigation. And then the bottom side of that shows the interactions between the Inlufi sponsor and the permity, where the program sponsor sells credits to the permity. The permity pays a fee for those credits, and the liability that they have under the Clean Water Act is then transferred to the Inlufi program sponsor. So we put this together in a different way, really says the same thing. But I think the main difference here is we've got the graphic that shows the types of impacts that might happen. Roadways get constructed, buildings are built, mass transportation may result in impacts. Those mitigation fees go to the mitigation site. That's actually a picture of Watson Woods Riparian Preserve. And then the mitigation credits go back up to the permity. And so I think the key piece here is the mitigation site must be protected in perpetuity through a site protection instrument or a conservation easement in our situation. So we have been working on this for quite some time, and this was brought to the then city council in 2020. We did not have as much planning or understanding of the project at that point, but identified benefits as economic, recreation, and conservation and environmental. And one of the things to highlight with the conservation and environmental is it really helps the city achieve some of its goals in terms of improving surface water quality. The Watson Woods Riparian Preserve is kind of a great big green infrastructure project. And the city's environmental coordinator has often described it as a great big sponge. So pollutants coming downstream get detained by that sponge that is Watson Woods Preserve. And the vegetation and the natural processes there can take that, take those pollutants out before they reach Watson Lake. To Councilmember Rusi's question, there are only five Inlufi mitigation programs within the state. Prescott Creeks and Arizona Game and Fish are the two that are listed at the top and then depicted on the map. The program is administered by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA through the Interagency Review Team. And our enabling instrument identifies our service area as the Verde River watershed. The regulations specify that program should take a watershed approach so that mitigation can happen as close to the impact site as possible. And so that's why we look at the Verde River watershed. We have a secondary service area as the Salt River watershed. And then if no credits are available or other programs available, we could take mitigation from anywhere in the, in the entire state. So I believe we have five sites depicted. Arizona Game and Fish has multiple sites within their program, whereas Prescott Creeks program is limited at this point to Watson Woods Riparian Preserve. And why a conservation easement? That question comes up frequently. Simply put, the mitigation work must be permanent. In the public interest, we don't want that to only last 25 years and then have to do it all over again once it gets bulldozed or imagine your worst case scenario. A conservation easement is a, is a permanent legal instrument that we can utilize for that, for that end. The Corps and the federal regulations, the Code of Federal Regulations specify that the Inlufi sponsor must develop a development slash mitigation plan. And there are 13 required elements to that plan. The site protection instrument or the conservation easement is number three in that list. So that's why we're here today presenting this information as we pursue permanent protection for the preserve site. Just a quick little timeline. The enabling instrument was established in 2013. In 2015, we initiated our work on our mitigation plan. The first draft of that was available in 2016. And at that point, we started meeting with our partners exploring the conservation easement concept. It was not until 2019, Councilmember Billy Orr really helped us get some traction. And since that point, we've been meeting regularly with city staff and our partners toward the conservation easement end. The goals for the Inlufi mitigation work that would occur at the preserve are largely consistent with our restoration plan from 2009 to 2013. It's really looking at the function of the creek and trying to get that working better for the community, providing a variety of ecosystem services. We're looking to increase biological diversity and then protect and restore riparian habitats through invasive species removal. So with this graphic, there's a lot going on here. This is a draft view of our work plan. And given that the preserve is so long and so detailed, we just took a clip out. There's an inset map there that shows with the blue line the area that is depicted on this map. And we also rotated the map to get a little bit more area within the, within the picture. So for orientation purposes, at the top of the map, we have Highway 89. In the top left corner is where Rossar Street joins Highway 89. And then over on the right side is Prescott Lakes Parkway. The two ways that I think we have generally looked at the mitigation or restoration work is work that's related to the Granite Creek Channel, which is depicted by the light blue lines that kind of squiggle through the property where flow goes from the left to the right. Watson Lake is downstream to the right of this image. So we have one area that's highlighted as blue. We have a couple of yellow polygons shown on the channel there. And then if you look really closely, there are a couple of orange marks on the channel as well. So those are really all designed to help stabilize the Granite Creek Channel. We have brading in the upper portion of this view. Pools and riffles need to be built in the downstream portions or in the middle portion of this view. And then the orange indicators are structures in the stream to help add stability where we have a road crossing and a trail crossing that is unstable. One of the overall goals, as with the restoration project moving forward, is to connect the Granite Creek Channel with its floodplain so that water can spread out on that floodplain, detain pollutants as it goes through, and make the area overall a wetter place. The other improvements are wetlands on the floodplain. The green polygons are existing wetlands, and the blue polygons represent wetlands that are called for as part of our, as part of our work plan. Wetlands are important features within the environment. Historically, we believe there were wetlands throughout the Granite Creek corridor. And there are not many of those at this point. So this is an opportune time to introduce those into the landscape. And they serve ecological purposes similar to what I've discussed in terms of water can spread out across the floodplain. It can slow down, and it can sink in, and then pollutants are detained. They also tend to be ecologically very rich environments. We see increased wildlife activity at those areas that range from mammals to reptiles and amphibians to our insect populations as well as birds. So lots of activity in those areas. So this is just a quick sketch. We also show a Zone C and a Zone B, which represent exclusions to the conservation easement area. And I think that's where Brian will take it back and explain a little bit more about what those are.
Yeah, so as, as Michael has just got done explaining and as you probably figured out by now, we've had a long history of working with Prescott Creeks in the preserve area. We've been able to maintain the function of the city's infrastructure in there while providing the benefits of the preserve. So the reason we're here at this point is because there'll be a fundamental change with the conservation easement, limit the use, the uses that the city can do on the property. So it was really important that the city made sure that we did our due diligence and investigated all the possible impacts of the conservation easement in terms of what the, what the cities, on city infrastructure, utilities, and possible roadway uses. So we're going to move into that aspect of it. Basically, each one of these slides will kind of represent a challenge and then what the solution that we found as being the most applicable if we're going to move forward with the conservation easement. So this slide talks about the preserve didn't, didn't include all of the riparian area in there. It's at 126 acre feet right now under the lease and looking at extending it through the entire boundary. On the slide that we showed earlier, there's a small representation of the same slide. And you can see the entire black boundary around the preserve would, would go to about 160 acres. So one of the, one of the challenges with that is, is that that would bring the, the conservation easement closer to the shore of Watson Lake. So that was a, why is that a concern? Well, it may or may not be, but one of the things is that Watson Lake is an impaired water body. We have certain responsibilities to that water body. And in previous studies and documentation, there has been acknowledgement that maybe in the future we might have to do some type of water quality features along the south boundary in order to improve water quality, such as maybe sediment structures. So, so what we wanted to do is, what we did is we, through the help of our consultant, we were able to gather about 23, 24 years of lake level data and compile that up to an average lake level. And then we also had good topographic data available. And we're able to kind of create a topographic representation of the average annual water level in the lake so that we could compare that to the boundary. And one of the, what we had, what we found in a nutshell was that approximately 50% of the time on an average annual water year, we have about a 200 to 300 foot buffer between where the proposed northern boundary of the, of the project is and where the actual shoreline would be. So that would give us abundant time and area in order to create or work within an area around the south shore of the lake. around the south shore of the lake if ever we needed to do that in the future. So next challenge, when we started this presentation, existing and future infrastructure needs. So this is, obviously, there's a lot of infrastructure. Again, the image on the side kind of shows a representation of all that infrastructure we just went through at the beginning of this presentation and how we're going to be able to maintain that infrastructure. And if we need to have future infrastructure for, you know, future development, future needs within the city, there is also the possibility that we would need to maybe extend our roadways in order to account for traffic or traffic concerns or additional roadway needs. So as Michael alluded to, we looked at a couple different options as we moved along. We've been working on this for, I've been working on it for a year and a half. It's been being worked on by the city longer than that. And we looked at a couple different ways we could go about this. But what we settled on is that really because of the needs of this infrastructure, we should establish some exclusion zones. So these zones will just not be part of the conservation easement. It'll allow us to have a lease agreement with Prescott Creeks over them so we can do some things, some aspects I'll talk about in terms of being in the preserve, but also give us the flexibility and the things that we need to do to account for these existing and possible future infrastructure. So this slide right here kind of gives a visual representation. The areas in gray, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit hard to read, but the areas in gray will represent exclusionary zones that will not be part of the conservation easement. The areas in blue that will be part of the conservation easement. So this will give us the area that we need within. The main alignments along the Rossar alignment to the south, the Prescott Lakes alignment, the Wapa obviously has to remain out. A little bit harder to see, but all along 89 corridor there, we got a 50-foot buffer so that if we ever need to extend the roadway or do any improvements in that area, we'll have the ability to do that. So that was our solution to that infrastructure needs. Governing documents.
Councilmember Rusing had a question.
Oh, I just would like to point out, didn't APS agree to reroute their overhead power lines? I think that's something that we need to acknowledge.
Definitely, exactly. And I think I hit it briefly earlier, but the APS alignment, and it's probably not super easy to see here, but on the little image right there, kind of through the Rossar alignment, the red dash line represents the existing APS lines as of right now. But we're well underway with APS of having that line relocated along the eastern boundary and then along the southern boundary and then to the west of the preserve, and that will be eliminated. So with the governing documents, we're going to have various levels of governing documents that will apply to this area at this point. Conservation easement will apply to all conservation easement areas and also other program documents within the Inlufi program. We'll want to establish a new lease that will apply to all the exclusionary zones so that they are covered also. And the city surveyor created a record or survey where he provided legal descriptions for all the exclusionary zone areas and all of the conservation areas so that there's a clear identification of what areas are which. So with this program, there's going to be an added layer of management on this with the conservation easement in place. So in order to deal with that extra level of management, the solution was to provide a joint management plan and a fire management plan for the area. Under the conservation easement, it'll be guided through the principles of the Inlufi program, and the conservation easement has its own legal document that describes what the uses and the intents can be. But then there's the exclusionary zones that we're going to have that are going to kind of blend this area together. And one of the goals of the city at this point was is that we need to be able to provide for our infrastructure. We need to be able to maintain it and extend it. But we've always been able to, in the preserve, actually work with Prescott Creeks in order to create a preserve that was kind of seamless in boundary so that it aesthetically had the same look and appeal to it. So this joint management plan will help us continue that in the future, providing day-to-day activities within the preserve and whose responsibilities for management, direction and management, identifying roles and responsibilities. We know we might have to go in there at some point in time and may have to do some work on a utility, but we want to be able to work within the preserve, do that work as efficiently as we can for the taxpayers, at the taxpayer's costs, but then replenish and restore that area so that in the future, somebody walking through that preserve might not even realize that they're in an exclusion reserve versus a conservation area. We just, but at the same time, we're not, you know, it will be identified in this plan that, you know, we're not going to plant trees over utilities. So that's what our document is trying to do, is trying to balance both of those usage out.
Councilmember Rusing, you had a question.
Yes. I think this is more for Michael. Isn't there going to be a land trust involved to manage the conservation easement?
At this point, the transaction is strictly between Prescott Creeks and the city of Prescott. When we initiated the project, we did explore a three-party solution and ultimately found that that was not a good fit for this particular project.
Okay. So there won't be a land trust involved in it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And the last point on here is that we're looking at updating the plan every five years, so we'll have to be getting together. We'll be getting together probably on a more regular basis than that, but on a five-year level, you'll probably be seeing a plan come back and to update it and provide any other beneficial or improve it in any way we can to enhance its usage. Another challenge that we had is simply that Watson Lake is one of our city's water supplies, as you all know. We wanted to make sure that by implementing the vegetation that this program was looking at doing, that we were not going to impact our water supply to Watson Lake. So we contracted with J.E. Fuller. They're a firm that specializes hydrology. They've also done several studies on Watson Lake. And this slide kind of just takes you through the spectrum of this study up on the upper-left-hand side.
You know, Brian, we only have six minutes left.
Okay, sounds good.
I won't be able to take some public comment.
Okay, sounds good, Mayor. I'll go ahead and briefly kind of move through this then. The hydraulic evaluation, in a nutshell, established that there was really no, well, that the proposed project has a generally benign impact on respect to average annual water volumes. So that was good to know. We were able to distinguish that we're not going to be impacted from that aspect of it. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Michael. Michael, we probably just have a few minutes, so let's blow through.
Yeah. So I think as we have explored this, there have been a variety of questions about Prescott Creeks. And, you know, I won't read every bullet point on this slide, but I think we, going into this, recognize that a conservation easement is perpetual. It's in perpetuity forever. And so we also recognize that we have a responsibility to manage it in perpetuity, perpetual management. There's a lot of structure around the organization as Prescott Creeks. As I mentioned, we are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. That's a corporation in the state of Arizona. We have a board of directors that has fiduciary responsibility, and then we've assembled a team with our staff and supporting contractors, bookkeepers, CPAs, and our engineering firm, Natural Channel Design, who did a lot of the planning and design work for the downtown project. Additionally, we have bylaws. In the event that there is a vacancy with our CEO or executive director position, the board would reappoint a new individual to that portion. And then both our enabling instrument and the Arizona revised statutes also provide guidance about the long-term, how the site and the conservation easement are to be managed and held over time. It is possible to transfer a conservation easement, but that would need to be to a qualified party, another government entity, or another not-for-profit organization. So there's a lot of structure that supersedes Prescott Creeks, and I think we have largely tried to step up to that guidance and that structure and feel like we have a firm position moving forward. There are also some questions about how the money works. Money comes in through credit sales, and then that money can only be used for the mitigation program, including administrative costs, which I believe are capped at 18%, which is specified in our enabling instrument. We're required to have financial assurances, so there's some security there. And then Prescott Creeks and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are the entities that can direct those funds. We provide an annual report to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on an annual basis, and that's something that could be copied to the city of Prescott if that's desired. And then our money presently resides in a financial institution that has FDIC insurance, and I want to say we opened that roughly about 11 years ago. So again, we kind of point at the Code of Federal Regulations that spells all these requirements out, and that provides a lot of structure for the organization.
So real briefly, I just wanted to go over some of the project costs at this point. These are hard costs that we paid to consultants. We all acknowledge that the city has put in a lot of time and labor on staff time, and we also acknowledge that Prescott Creeks has probably has put in a lot of time and labor on it. But I wanted to give you this slide right here to kind of show the cost that we have put into this point, roughly $43,000. And then the future closeout costs, if we were to move forward with this conservation easement, to our best estimate at this point in time, we're estimating around $15,000 to close the project out, if that's what the council chooses to do. With that, I had some summary and takeaways here, but I think my main point that I'd like to represent is that from a perspective of water management, the restoration of the floodplains is really probably the key benefit from the city's perspective, water quality-wise and flood control-wise. We talked about that TMDL structure that we might need at the south shore of the lake. An active and restored floodplain might actually allow us to foresee not having to do those type of improvements because now Granite Creek is acting the way it should be when it's represented by a good, working creek. So with that, I will go ahead and will be happy to answer any questions. At the time, we have representatives from the Army Corps of Engineer. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce them earlier, but they're here.
Councilmember Rusing has a question.
Thank you. That last page was missing from my packet about the costs, but that was my question was about the costs. Since this program's going to be in perpetuity, I can't see saddling the taxpayers with these ongoing costs. Have we had a discussion as to who is going to be covering these costs? Because I feel that the Prescott Creeks should be covering these costs 100% as we've already invested hundreds of hours of legal and public works time in bringing this to fruition. So it seems to be only fair that Prescott Creeks would step up and cover the cost in perpetuity. Thank you.
I think one of the things in this program, the cost in perpetuity would be covered mostly by the mitigation credits because they would be coming in from outside sources, and that's the revenue that's generated in order to cover the costs as the project goes on and on and on. And I think Michael can talk a little bit more, but they have to budget a certain amount of the mitigation credits coming in for future use.
That's correct. And just for clarification, the cost slide that Brian presented, those are one-time establishment costs. And when we were pursuing a three-party transaction, the expectation was that we were going to have north of $100,000 in cost. And so when Brian and I worked up these numbers, I think, I can't speak for Brian, but I know I was pleased that they were significantly less than $100,000. I think the ongoing costs in terms of implementing mitigation, planting trees, creating wetlands, doing the things that were presented on that work plan slide, those costs are covered by the credit sales. And then a portion of those credit sales, Prescott Creeks has to set money aside for long-term management. So in the event that all the trees die in the future, in the event that we get a 100-year flood event, ideally, there is money in the bank for all time moving forward. So from that perspective, the long-term costs for the mitigation work will be borne by Prescott Creeks and the mitigation program.
Councilmember Moore, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a few comments real briefly. Obviously, this is city-owned property, and Prescott Creeks is just managing it for the city. So yes, the city has borne expenses, but it is our property. Also, I just want to point out that this area is an important bird area. It is a national designation with the National Audubon Society. It's a critical habitat, and riparian habitats in Arizona are very threatened. There's only about 3% left in the entire state of Arizona from what we originally had. So any efforts to preserve this in perpetuity is very, very important, and I'm supportive of it.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Looks like you've mitigated a lot of the risks or the concerns, and I just want to ask the city management, legal, anyone else, are there any other risks people are concerned about that have not been mitigated that we need to consider or know about?
I can say from our perspective, we were worried about the water and some of the other issues. We reviewed it, and those risks are mitigated. At this point, there's some decisions for council to be made, not today, but I think the major risks are mitigated.
Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I appreciate the presentation from both Prescott Creeks and Public Works today. My biggest, single biggest concern with relation to this project was making sure that since this conservation easement is in perpetuity, that we are going to make sure that the access to utility lines going forward is maintained for what we might have future needs that we don't yet understand. When I met with Gwen and Brian prior to this, they kind of relayed that they were pretty sure that those concerns were resolved at this point. This presentation fortified that for me. So I think the achievement of what this conservation easement does, to Councilman Moore's point, is certainly worth making, the city council making investment in granting the conservation easement. So thank you, Michael Byrd, for the presentation, and Brian, you as well. Thank you.
Well, we've exceeded our time here for this study session, but I did say that I would take a couple of public comments.
We don't have any.
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll have to postpone any additional comments for when this item comes back for an actual vote. So thank you, Michael, for your presentation here. Thank you, Brian. It's now 3:03, so normally, we start a voting session at 3 o'clock, but if you'll indulge the council for maybe eight minutes to take a little break, we'll come back and begin the voting session at 3:10. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.